All right, good, good evening, everyone. Tuesday, February twenty 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 four at six P. M., regular city council meeting. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Vice Chair, Madam Chair.
Here.
Councilmember Papano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Silent prayer and flag. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Replay statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and A T and T U verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro fourteen live dot Zach County dot gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, February twenty third at nine A. M. and Saturday, February twenty fourth at nine A. M. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube dot com forward slash Metro Cable fourteen.
Next agenda item B, agenda approval addition, error deletion council. If it's none, next agenda item C, presentation, subject, Black History Month, Galt Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to invite up Crystal Rollins, who's with our Black History Month Working Group. This group was brought together some years ago under former chief Todd Sockman in an attempt to make sure that we're reaching out to different groups in our community, whether it's neighborhoods, the business community, in this case, our small but mighty group of folks who participate in helping us celebrate black history here in Galt, and there is a history here for Galt. And this year, they decided to put together a video that talks about sort of how they came to Galt and their experiences and, and the benefits of living here in Galt from their perspective. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Rollins, who will continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, good morning. Good afternoon, good evening, City Council members and members of the public. As Chief mentioned, I am Crystal, Crystal Rollins, and I'm a member of God. I've been living here about ten years in July, so I'm proud to say that, and thank you for allowing me to be present with you all in this space and in this place and speak with you today. So as Chief mentioned, we compiled this work group about six, seven years ago to be a resource, right, to bring awareness, inclusivity to Galt, to the community, and more importantly, just be a support, right, to bridge that gap between communication, between law enforcement, the community, and the trust. As you all know, there's, there's concerns with trust sometimes, so this group really was brought for that purpose. As a member of that group, we all have a desire for safety in the community. With that being said, it's Black History Month. It's about shaping and sharing experiences of all black Americans whose lives have been shaped and challenged and strengthened in America, and it's not just about one month. So it's always about trying to build the collective, equality, justice, rights for all people, integrity and leadership. One of the things I will say is with working with Chief and Galt PD collectively, as he mentioned, we did decide to do a video storytelling series, just to speak about our lives in the community, our journey, whether it be good or bad, adversities we might have faced, how we overcame them, and then, more importantly, the partnership that was formed with the police department, which I think all of us are pretty pleased with. It's an ongoing, the hope is that this is an ongoing series, not just to focus on one community and population in this town, but for all people. We do believe that all people should feel safe in the community. With that being said, we have a video to share, and so I will let Chief.
Astina.
Let's play.
There you go.
So as you know, our community engagement and community outreach is important for the police department. One of the things that we try to do is talk to members of the community and get input or feedback about their experiences with our engagement and the services that we provide to the community. And so this month, we're focusing on Black History Month because February is the month that nationally that is celebrated, and we take time to learn about the history of black history in the nation and how that can serve as a marker for learning from our past mistakes and building to improve in the future.
So I think initially, the purpose of this group was to continue to educate our community to, we're African-American community, I'm born with Galt PD and address issues that, not so much in our community, but kind of going around the nation, and just to be inclusive and to show our community that at the time, Galt is still is one of the most proactive, progressive departments within the outreach of the community. And I think Galt PD is continuing to carry that process of education and awareness. I know TJ over the years, and he just said, we just want another voice talking about experiences when they involve, but also some of the things that we want to do to grow the community and show that everybody is welcome, everybody is, we're an inclusive city. So I was a little hesitant, but when I came aboard and saw that, you know, your predecessor and some of the officers and some of the people in the community were being very honest, it felt good to know that somebody cared about us.
One day, I was coming back from work, and I was in Galt Police Department parking lot, parking our state vehicle, and TJ stopped me in the parking lot and said, hey, we have this group, this is what we're about, this is what we're doing, do you want to join? And so I said, sure. So I came inside, and here I am, years later.
Growing up in the environment that I did, unfortunately, I had a number of experiences with law enforcement where they were not what you would expect them to be. When you think of the police, you want them to be someone you can call, someone you can trust, and someone that has integrity, and my experience had been everything but that. Now that I've been in Galt, and you all started this, I guess we'll call it an outreach engagement program, I was approached to participate in this program, and I will say, at first, it was very apprehensive. I had a lot of discussions with my family about whether it was something I should be participating in, and I'm glad that I did because it gave me insight that I wouldn't have otherwise had. We had a lot of conversations where, at the table, I'm talking about things that I never shared before with someone, people from your staff who were interested in what I had to say, and they shared their perspective, and that really changed my perspective on law enforcement in this town and even beyond.
Um, I had some issues in the neighborhood, right, not relating to race, just some, just some noise stuff, some disruption, you know, and I really felt protected, right? I think Galt PD, Police Department responded immediately, right, and the way that they came out to protect, not just meet with the neighbor at midnight or one in the morning, I just felt so, so thankful.
I do, I remember two incidents, our sons growing up, where there was some challenges, people driving by whenever we all got there. We dealt with it, it did become, it did become a thing, but it also, I think, it was a reminder that, you know, we can't, as far as I'm concerned.
The individual that I was dating, we had gone out that night, and he had come back to my house, and at the time, I was renting on the edge of Galt, and he needed to get up and leave, which I think most would think was a weird hour, it was four o'clock in the morning, to go let his dog out at home. So he left, and he went around the bend coming from, I guess that's South Lincoln, to the stop sign that's right in front of the library, and he was pulled over, and the conduct of the officer at that time was unfortunate and not what I was expecting based on my experience with the Galt Police Department. So that night, we were very upset, and so I said, you know, I've built this relationship, so I'm going to call the chief and see if he and I could have a conversation. So he was very receptive, and he came to my place of employment and sat across the table, across from me and the gentleman that I was dating, and we had a very open and honest conversation, and I explained to him that I expect things to be different, and the line of questioning and the things that were said and the way that this individual was treated was not, not what I expected from the people that I had been sitting across the table from, and it was very uncomfortable, but it was very comforting to know that I could have that conversation with him, and he would listen, and we could have an honest exchange where I think he heard what I said, and I heard what he said, and the gesture was life-changing for me and the gentleman, because the message that I had been getting from the Galt Police Department to that point was, you know, pay, you can count on us, you can trust us, we lead with integrity. And apart from the incident, the few nights before that meeting, having Chief Sockman show up on his own time and have that conversation was exactly what he said that you guys were. And that was the beginning for me of feeling like, okay, I can trust them, and I can call them, and I can expect to be treated in the way that they should be treating me.
Because I think being inclusive to educate our community about how big stereotypes that exist between African-American community and law enforcement, to break down those barriers, whether they were perceived, whether they were real or not real, and continue to work on that. And the ultimate goal, I think, kind of what we're talking about now is to continue to be one person, that at the end of the day, we all really want the same thing I kind of talked to you about, with Lieutenant Small, not Captain Small, who was just kind of talk, regardless of race, culture, creed, color, ninety-nine percent of us want, you know, safe families, healthy neighborhoods, a great job, a good place to eat, some vacation time, and just, you know, the ability just to, to live freely and to live in a greater community, and that's, that I think crosses all boundaries, races, beliefs, religions, and everything that is that.
I would just encourage anyone who's watching this to be receptive and responsive to the outreach. You are certainly making the effort, but those efforts only go as far as the citizens of Galt respond to what you're doing. So I would just encourage anyone who sees an opportunity to engage, show up, just as you all are showing up for us.
Thank you.
So I want to thank Crystal and her husband, who's quietly sitting here. Good evening, and the rest of the group who participated. They really decided this was the message that they wanted to deliver this year, and our social media team with Officer Little, who put this video together for us, and Sergeant Hanson, who were involved in making this on our behalf, and it's really a testament to that group and how far we've come since this was started, you know, six or seven years ago. Also want to give a shout out to Sean Farmer and his family for the use of his coffee shop because we wanted to be in a place that, you know, had some history, had some historical things, and a nice background other than my boring conference room walls, and so I do appreciate that also. But again, thank you, Crystal, and thank you for everybody for indulging us in that video, and we will be posting portions of that on our social media, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Thank you, Crystal, and your husband, and thank you, everybody involved on that video. This is a great, this is very good to communicate, outreach, communicate each other. Counsel, any comment on this presentation?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Thank you, Crystal, for the presentation. Thank you for being honest. To solve hard problems takes honesty and an adult attitude. Thank you for the police department for meeting that halfway, so to speak, and having the reciprocating, the honesty back was really pleasant. It was not the easiest thing to listen to, but it's not necessarily should be, but it certainly was a great presentation. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I think, go ahead, Rich.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Crystal, and everybody. I recognize most of the people in the video, and I know they do good work and care about our city. Chief, thank you for continuing this project. I know it's started before your time at the helm, and I think it's important that we listen to everyone in our community, and I think that's a great platform to do it, so thanks.
Yeah, it was a good video. What I wanted to mention was, you know, listening, when I was there and you guys were filming it, listening to the story about the traffic stop and all that, and how the chief Sockman handled that, you know, Galt PD is not going to be perfect. I think no police department is perfect, but I think when you have situations that happen, I think it's, it's important that it's how you, how you deal with that situation to correct, to make sure that you can become better each time, and, and Galt has, Galt has a very diverse community, unlike what some people think that it's just some old good old boy farm town. It's, we have a lot of diversity here. We have a large Hispanic population, amongst others, and so I think that I appreciate Galt PD continuing to, you know, be inclusive, everybody in the community. I do appreciate also the diversity in the police department, as far as our officers. I think it's important, so we have a good connection with our people, so thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Have no other comment with the council, then I'm going to move to the next agenda item. It's public comment. Tina, please.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. We have one comment, Kason Jones.
My name is Kason Jones. I'm part of the Galt Youth Commission, and this week, we decided to participate in a Random Acts of Kindness Week, and today, council members, as lucky for you, we got thank you cards for you, so I'll pass these out, and then I'll speak a little more.
Thank you.
So each of those cards, at least one member, wrote that personally to you guys, and have a few other things planned yesterday. Obviously, the holidays, we didn't do anything, and that we plan to make up for it next week. Tomorrow, we will be having lunch with the Special Needs of Liberty Ranch, and we'll be providing lunch for them. And a little spoiler for two officers in the back, we have a little present for our Police and Fire Department on Thursday, and then Friday, we will wrap up with lunch with the Special Needs at Galt High. So, yeah, that's about it. So thank you, guys, for what you guys do, and have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Tina, any other comment?
No public comment.
Do you have a speaker card, Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to make a comment on an extension of Black History. We should all be aware.
Yeah, go ahead, very quick.
Regarding Black History Month, is an extension that I would like to bring up, we should all remember. NAACP, the National Advancement, National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, still exists quite well. I, for one, represent, besides the commissioner here, I represent California state retirees. We were very proud, with an NAACP breakfast in March, we have purchased three tables, we'll have vendors there, we're very proud to represent our black people as well as everyone else, and that's the purpose of that prayer breakfast, so let us all bow our heads and pray for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And move to the next agenda item, report by city council members on regional board, commission, and committees. Vice Mayor Lisanne.
Yeah, I attended the California Council of Governments Board Meeting, and we talked about the endeavors for the next year. One of the main priorities is going to be ensuring that the governor's proposed three hundred thousand dollar reduction in the budget, I'm sorry, three hundred million dollar reduction in the budget stays, and that is for money that goes to local agencies for infrastructure development, and that was kind of the highlight of it. I also attended the Sacramento Valley Division Board Meeting, and we just discussed the couple of things, but the highlights were the meeting for the Sacramento Valley Division that's coming up, general membership meetings on March fifteenth in Loomis. The speaker will be, there'll be two speakers. One is Placer County District Attorney Morgan Guyer, who will talk about fentanyl prosecution, and then guest speaker Brandon Kay, who's going to talk about extreme heat programs and climate resilience from, and he's from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. Then lastly, just the SACOG Board Meeting last week on Thursday. We talked about many things, but really, the highlight was the blueprint, like I mentioned before, the long-range transportation plan for the region, and we spent a lot of time on discussing what that is going to look like, and at our next meeting, they're going to have a layout of the plan and what the progress dates are for those plans, and so there will be more to come on that, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Papano.
On the thirteenth, Councilmember Farmer and I participated in the cast meeting along with the acting city manager, and the majority of the meeting, we got some really encouraging safety updates from both school districts, mostly regarding communication systems that they're putting in place for active updates during any kind of critical event, and was encouraged to know that independently, they've each selected the same system, so they'll be interoperative, and it's going to be really exciting to see that come to fruition here soon. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Papano mentioned, I attended the cast meeting, and as he also mentioned, we got some safety updates from the district communication system, which, which he mentioned. Was very excited to hear, we have a standing agenda item at our cast meetings to talk about school safety, so it's always a pretty good discussion. Along with that, we also talked about, the districts are pretty excited about, you know, the inbound SRO, Additional School Resource Officer, soon, and we did also, another standing agenda item we talked about is enrollment, you know, what those numbers look like, and how current developments in Galt and future developments that are kind of on the horizon will impact those numbers, and how we hope they will, or how they may not, so there's a lot of kind of talk about that, which is always good. And, yeah, overall, I look forward to those meetings. I think it's good for the city and the school districts to be on the same page, and so that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor Sandu. I have nothing to report at this time.
Myself, I would like to report, we have on February seventh, quality of life meeting with the council member Farmer, acting city managers, Mr. Slies, and the city attorney Supplandario. We touch bases with a few things. One is homeless kind of thing in City of Galt and outside, and also, we discuss some code enforcement alongside on Dry Creek. And this will start the discussion, but it's coming meeting, if we have anything comes out, I will report in the next meeting. Thank you. That's it, myself. Now I'm going to move to the next agenda item. Information consent calendar. It is recommended that item one through nine be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
No, I don't want to pull any particular one, but I would like to make a general request upon many of them. So if I may, tonight's agenda involves a lot of money, and that's no exception with the consent calendar, and I don't want to look like we're glossing over the dollars we're about to spend. I'm not saying they're not coming from appropriate places and haven't been accounted for, or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I would just ask that staff would give an overview of where the money's coming from, and, excuse me, et cetera, et cetera, if that makes sense.
All right. Thank you. Now I would like to ask, city clerks, if you please read the item one through nine on consent calendar.
Receiving file warrants for period ending February seventh, two thousand twenty-four, minutes of the regular meeting of February sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Cost road improvements at U P R R Crossing, C I P five twenty-three D, Federal Aid S T P L dash five two nine three, Engineering Services Contract Award. Authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for Assembly Bill one nine two four, enabling the Sacramento Regional Transit District to expand the service boundary to include the cities of Galt and Isleton and other portions of unincorporated Sacramento County. Fourth Street Promenade Extension, Federal Aid S T P L dash five two nine three, Engineering Services Contract Award. Walnut Avenue Improvements Project, C I P five two three H, Federal Aid S T P L dash five two nine three, Engineering Services Contract Award. Resolution authorizing access to summary criminal history information through the Department of Justice to be transmitted to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Approval of new job classifications and salary ranges for Economic Development Director full-time, Police Booking Officer part-time, Program Coordinator full-time, and litter abatement worker full-time. Interim Human Resources Director appointment.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think, as I understood, Councilmember Vandenberg, he didn't want to pull any, request to pull anything from consent, but he had emailed the Finance Director earlier today with some inquiry, and I think he was just asking for Matt to detail at a high level the finances before there's a final vote.
Correct. I just want to make that. Sure. Public. Go ahead, Matt.
Sure. So from the consent calendar, items F three, F five, and F six have appropriations increases included with them for total appropriations increase of two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, and those appropriations are coming from the Transportation Development Act Fund, which we commonly refer to as Fund Nine. So those are transportation dollars. And then there was some clarifications for the consent item F eight, the new job classifications and salary schedules, that does not include any appropriations increases or add any additional staffing. staffing. Some of those are full-time positions, but they don't authorize the city or staff to add full-time bodies. And consent item F9, the interim HR Director Appointment, that will come out of the existing HR budget because that will fill a vacancy that's been created.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Vandenberg, are you be satisfied with the explanation, right?
Yeah, I mean, the public can read all of this information and see that these are coming from, you know, in some cases, they'll come from, what's the word, grants, thank you, sir, grants, et cetera, those kind of items. But if you were just to take a cursory look at the agenda, you would see an awful lot of money being allocated in many different directions. So I didn't want the public to think that we're just glossing over it. That's, that was my total point. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, councilmember. Now I would like to ask to approve the motion, consent calendar as presented.
Mayor, just make sure, go to public comment.
Any public comment on this consent calendar?
No public comment.
Thank you. Now I would like to ask to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Is moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. May have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item G, Schedule Matter Notice of Public Hearing.
Done this evening.
Done this evening. The next agenda item H, Regular Calendar, the H1, City Attorney's Office Subject Interim City Manager Appointment, Mr. Supplandario.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a item before you, as you know, the previous city manager resigned. It was effective February 2nd. And Mr. Solis has done a wonderful job in the interim, looking stellar in his tie, I might say. But he's done a great job filling in for that void. He's done it before, and he's always been willing to step up. As the council explored options, one of the concerns was continuity of services, continuity of government. And through that process of determining the next steps, tapped Chris Arias on the shoulder. And he is a longtime city employee. He's, he had been with the city for 15-plus years and left the city as the Community of Development Director, went over to the city of Manteca. And after some conversations, is enthusiastic about returning to Galt and continuing with the projects that are ongoing and helping with the, all the various fronts that the city has prioritized as part of its strategic plan. And so to that end, what we have before you is a contract for an interim city manager appointment with Chris Arias, the salary of $208,860 annualized, $17,405 on a monthly basis. It is a minimum one-year term. It can be extended until the permanent city manager is in place. But the concept here was to provide, get somebody that has experience, understands the community, understands the city's values and where we're going, and is able to step in seamlessly and continue to help move projects forward pending that long-term recruitment process. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Supplandario. I would like to also make the statement on this. I'm very pleased to support appointment, Mr. Chris Arias as interim city manager in City of Galt. He was working in the city 15 years, then he left for Manteca. And he left very good reputation when he was working here. He was a very great asset to our community. He's very knowledgeable and very city workings. And his experience and personality and make me believe he is a threat for move our city forward in a positive direction. I look forward to working with him if we tonight make a decision with my other constituents, if they support him. Now I would like to ask, any councilmember, any comment, any question on this appointment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment.
Thank you.
So, you know, the council coming up with, you know, an answer in a situation where your city manager leaves is not, is not easy. You know, we have lots of options. One option was to go out for recruitment, to find a temporary city manager in lieu of then recruiting a permanent city manager. And I can only speak for myself that I think, you know, this, this option made a lot of sense for us. We like the direction that the city is in going right now. We felt like we're heading in the right direction. And we have a lot of things going on. It seemed, although I can say, I think I speak for the whole council, that we have a lot of confidence in all the department heads. And so we felt confident in the very short term, which we've been going through the last couple of months, that we could have, like Mr. Solis and has stepped in, which we appreciate that, sir. But it just didn't make sense to have, you know, department heads be temporary a couple of months here. They, I mean, they have a lot on their plates. Public Works has big projects coming up, Parks and Rec has big projects coming up, Ms. Mendez, ton of stuff going on. There's just so much going on in each department. We didn't want to pull people off their regular duties. So when we found that Chris was available, coming from Galt, you know, knowing the city, because he worked here for so long, knowing the council, knowing most of the department heads, if not all, it just seemed like he could hit the ground running and it was, it was a good, you know, solution. And so for me, it's really a stopgap solution. And I think he'll, he'll do a good job for the year that we need him. And then the decision, you know, at some point, we'll come back to the council, how we want to pursue a permanent city manager. So welcome, Chris, and look forward to working with you. So, thank you.
The other councilmember? Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Farmer. You know, it's, we had many options, and I think this is the best one to move forward on. Although Chris left here as the Community Development Director, he's coming in as the city manager, which is quite different, but I'm sure that he'll do a wonderful job. And we have all the faith in his ability to lead and help manage the day-to-day operations of the city as a whole. And so I want to welcome, should we pass this tonight, which I can't, I don't know why we wouldn't, but welcome Chris and thank all of the directors and other city employees for all their patience over the last couple of months. I know it's been a little tough, but you all rose to the occasion and I want to thank you for your service and thank you for the public and your understanding and patience with this process.
Thank you. Mr. Papano. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's difficult to find a good city manager. I'm really glad that Chris has a long history with Galt. He understands what the citizens want and need. And he's had many interactions with not only the staff, but the citizens as well, including myself. So, and I, one of the things I really appreciate about Chris is that he's willing to discuss a difficult topic that he may not agree with in a calm, straightforward manner to get a resolution. And I think that's very important when put into position of leadership. So that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. And I believe Chris Arias is in the ordinance. Chris, you want to see a few words to come to the podium? I know I put you in a position, but thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm extremely humbled and grateful about the appointment. I look forward to coming back to Galt, working with council, working with staff. And I do know all the directors. So if they weren't a director when I left, I think they were staff, and I congratulate them on their, you know, their promotions. And I look forward to really accomplishing the goals that council has set out. And I don't want to drone on. I'm sure you'll hear enough from me in the coming year, but I'm extremely thankful and I'm looking forward to Monday and getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Galt. All right. Any public comment on this agenda item, Tina?
No public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Now I would like to ask, to make a motion on this agenda item H1.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Papano, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. May have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Now I'm going to move the next agenda item H2, Park and Recreation Department, subject Ward Parks Recreation and Open Space Matter Plan Contract, agenda item, Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I look also forward to Chris showing up on Monday to work. That way I can do my own job. But so the City of Galt voters passed Measure Q in November of 2022. Following the placement of Measure Q on the November ballot, City, Galt City Council adopted spending priority resolutions regarding the use of revenue generated by Measure Q. The resolution prioritized spending of revenue generated by Measure Q. Some examples were Parks and Rec, including maintenance improvements to facilities, programming support for community events, or other recreational programs. It also included landscaping, weed abatement, and blight prevention. Those are just some examples of that. With Measure Q in place, City Council requested a Parks Master Plan be performed to assist them with the information to put a spending plan together based on the community needs. On November 9th, 2023, the Parks and Rec Department issued a RFP for Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Parks and Rec received three qualified responses and one non-qualified response. Parks and Rec invited the top two firms to be invited to an interview panel. The result of the interviews was that RHAA would provide the most comprehensive plan to the City of Galt. At this time, I would like to invite representatives of RHAA to provide a presentation to the City Council regarding their plan.
Thank you, Mayor Sandu and the councilmembers. I'm Barbara Lundberg, Principal with RHAA Landscape Architects, and we are very pleased to have been selected to prepare your Parks and Rec Master Plan. We have a brief presentation for you. I'll introduce our team. We'll talk about our approach and then briefly touch on the project schedule. So, is somebody going to advance the slides or should I do that? I can do that, I think. Okay. So just the, can you advance it one more? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And I want to start out with telling you a little bit about RHAA Landscape Architects. This is our office in Mill Valley. We're just north of San Francisco. We have 28 landscape architects, and we have been in business for over 60-plus years. And during that time, we've prepared 24 Parks and Rec Master Plans. And one of them was the Galt Master Plan that was prepared in, I think it was 1991. So we aren't strangers to your community, although I'm sure lots have changed. And then in addition, we, we have designed and seen built well over 500 park projects. We bring a depth of understanding in park design as well as park planning. So this is our team. This is a team structure. We see the City of Galt, Armando, and your department and the community as part of our team. We will serve as the prime consultant. We have sub consultants to help us out. We have Godbe Research that will help us with the statistically valid survey. We have Ballard King, who are experts in recreation planning. And we have EPS, Economic Planning System, who are specialists in public planning. Just a delay. So here's our RHAA team here. I'm Barbara Lundberg, as I mentioned, and I will serve as Principal in Charge, doing all the quality control. John Martin, who is not with me tonight, is on vacation. But here with me is Alyssa Gill, who is, will be the Assistant Project Manager. And our sub consultants are Ken Ballard from Ballard King, and they will be looking at operations and maintenance. Typhion Rice Evans, he is with EPS, and he's going to be looking at funding for the project. And Brian Godbe, who heads Godbe Research, will be helping us with the statistically valid survey. Now, just briefly, our approach. We have a four-step process. The first step, because I can't read that. Our first step is understanding who you are. And that's understanding how your department works, you know, what your demographics are. And, and, you know, we'll be reviewing all your parks and assessing them and reviewing important documents. The second step is establishing the core values, and those core values are what we hear from the community. And then the third step is to articulate a vision. And that is, we will analyze the gap in what you have now and what the community wants. We'll make recommendations, and we'll prioritize those recommendations. And then finally, with the Parks Master Plan, we'll implement a strategy, an action plan that is based on a realistic and sustainable financial strategy. So with that, I'm going to ask Alyssa to just give you a little bit more detail in each one of these steps.
Thank you, Barbara. As Barbara mentioned, my name is Alyssa Gill. And let me talk a little bit more about our process. So our first step in understanding who you are and establishing an understanding, we, this is really just an information collecting process. So we take the demographics information of the City of Galt, and we also look through all of the city-provided documents that have a lot about your history and your policy that will relate to our work. We also do what we call our inventory and analysis, where our team comes together and goes through each of the parks and facilities in your system to really see what the existing conditions are and start to make our own assessment of what improvements we can see. At the same time, we're working with our sub consultants on assessing your operations approach and how that's supporting your system as it exists, while also thinking about how this is being funded and what your approach to funding is. Next, what we do is we have a very extensive community outreach process. It's very important to us that we're getting as wide of a demographic as we can and that we're speaking to as many groups as we can. So what we do is we actually have a series of public workshops and pop-up events that are meant to really engage the community so that they can give us feedback about what their needs are. We also work with stakeholders. So these are community groups that we see that you either introduce us to or we find. And this is where you can really see what specific groups need from your Parks and Recreation System. So whether it's Galt Youth Baseball or your senior center, we want to make sure that we're hearing from a wide diversity of voices. At the same time, we're conducting multilingual resident surveys just to get another, just source of information so that we're really listening to as many people as possible. And throughout this process, we're also checking in with the Parks and Recreation Commission as well as presenting to City Council. So what do we do with all of this information that we've gathered from our document review as well as from our community outreach process? This is what we call our, where we're articulating as well as from our community outreach process? This is what we call our where we're articulating a vision, but more specifically, your vision. What do the people of the City of Galt want? And where is that need not being met? And that's what we do with what we call our gap analysis. We look for those needs, and we look for where we can make recommendations to improve that need. At the same time, we're looking at the codes and regulations that you have and seeing how those can actually support our recommendations, while also thinking about what are the changing trends and new directions in recreation. So what are what can we look forward to in the future that's really going to help the citizens of Galt? And then finally, while we're looking at all of this, we take any of the recommendations that we've created, and we start to prioritize them. And that's what we call our action plan. And so we want to know what is the most important to your citizens, and that's where we can have an efficient use of financial resources. At the same time, we're looking at the organizational, operational, and maintenance implementation. So how are we supporting any new recommendations that we may have provided? And then, at the end of all of this information gathering and discussion, we prepare a draft and final master plan, and that's what we hand over to you to use as a roadmap for the future of Parks and Recreation. So I'll go ahead and hand it back to Barbara, just to talk about timing.
Just briefly, this is our schedule. It's a little hard to read here, but typically, it's a 12-month process. Sometimes we need to extend that a bit. We want to make sure that we capture enough of the community's input, and sometimes it requires that we extend the survey, or we have, you know, additional workshops or meetings. Summertime is never truly a good time to have a community meeting. People have a tendency to go on vacation, so maybe we have to push that in to the fall a little bit. But typically, it's a 12-month schedule. So with that, this is our process, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Barbara. Just for the clarification, you know, use a couple of things I would like to ask as a brief. You said community outreach and community meetings. Can you give me just a brief community outreach, what kind of criteria you can use to reach out the community on this process?
So, I mean, besides the surveys that we will send out and receive back, at the community meetings, typically, we schedule four of them. First community meeting is to talk about the process, to introduce the survey, and to generally just, you know, get our initial community feedback. And then the second community meeting, typically what we do is, we discuss the results of the survey and have a discussion with the community to get more information. And then the third community meeting is where we bring to the community our recommendations, you know, what we're saying we've heard, and, you know, what the gap is in what you currently have and what the community wants. We have that discussion. And then typically, the fourth community meeting is to talk about the draft of Parks and Rec Master Plan. So and in between that, we, you know, there intercept events. What else do we have?
We can go to some of the parks.
Yeah. We'll go to the farmers' markets. We'll go to some community events that are in addition to these four community meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Lundberg. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather, for the presentation. You know, I do look forward to the 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 community outreach that you plan on doing. I hope you guys leave no stone unturned. What you'll find, even in a small town like Galt, is there's always a certain amount of apathy where, you know, people are not engaged. I mean, let's be honest, not all people come to council meetings. And so it's really difficult to try to get the word out there to gather as much input as possible. Unfortunately, a lot of times, we have people will come afterwards and say, "Oh, I didn't know you guys were doing that," or "I didn't get to put my two cents in," or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm sure that goes for everywhere. But I think it's important that we have this plan in place. Parks and Recreation, one of the main priorities for this council was quality of life. Parks and Recreation in this town is like the epitome of quality of life. And so it's whether you're in a sports program, or you're just someone who takes your dog to the dog park, or you just want your town to look nice with landscaping, whatever, it checks boxes for everybody who lives here. And so we want to get it right. With Measure Q, you know, it's important that we have an understanding of that we fully understand what people of Galt want, and then we can figure out how to facilitate that. And of course, the important piece is, if we provide those wants, are we going to be able to maintain those things? Because maintenance has been a big problem in the past. You know, we can just build all the things we want, but then how do we take care of those things? And so I look forward to seeing this. I know it's going to take about a year to do this, right? It's a lengthy process. I encourage anybody who's watching to engage with the outreach that's going to be offered, because we want to hear from everybody. This is your community, and we want to the five of us need to know what the community wants moving forward. This is not something just for us. This will be something that will hopefully be a living, you know, guideline for the council after us, and maybe the council after that, and so on. You mentioned the main you mentioned 1991. I think the main difference now is, I think, the Park Master Plan there, people might be thinking, "Well, we had a plan then," but, you know, then we Parks and Rec has kind of struggled and stuff. But I think the difference now is, I feel like we have the means, you know, and we have, you know, we've put that in place now, and now we need to figure out what to do. Before, I think, you could put this fabulous plan out, but it's like if you don't have the ability to do anything. So I look forward to seeing the outreach, and I'll definitely try to attend some of those. So thank you again. And if we should, we approve this tonight, which I think we probably will. I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any other council member?
Yeah. I just I think I understand it, but I want to make it clear that, yes, there's a the process kind of looks like a lot of wish lists of what we want. But I want to be sure that the process also includes an assessment of what we have. Over the next 12 months, we certainly have plenty of things to work on repairing and stuff. But beyond that, I think, you know, we need to think about not looking at just fixing what we have landscaping-wise and so forth, but actually starting to convert some things into things that are perhaps a little more water-wise, easier to maintain, because, you know, it may happen that there's another downturn and a continuing drought, and we don't want to find ourselves in a position that we're recently coming out of, where we had to, you know, let things go without maintenance, because we couldn't do it. So am I correct in all that, that that is going to be a part of this plan?
Yes, definitely. And, you know, we have assistance with our consultants Ballard King, who will be looking at operations and maintenance and how making recommendations for improvements if they are needed. And also with EPS, our financial people, who will be actually looking at a funding strategy for the city to fund their the recommendations that we make.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing, just for people who are watching, that this is just a guideline. This is a guideline. Doesn't mean that, you know, this council or future councils have to do exactly what's recommended. It's more like, you know, we're leaning on professionals to tell, especially with the designs and such. But at any given time, we can obviously take our own liberties with things and reprioritize things, because things may change. So just wanted to state that this is not like a locked, you know, in stone. It's a living kind of thing. So thank you.
I'll go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lundberg. Appreciate your presentation, Ms. Gill. I heard a lot about community outreach, and I'm absolutely thrilled by that. I think that was one of the reasons why we discussed having a master plan done. And so I don't want to gloss over that. I think that's important. The other piece, though, that I think is specific community outreach, and you didn't touch on that, but I think you kind of did in terms of where you're going to go. But we have many nonprofit organizations in this community that utilize Parks and Recreation services and/or facilities. And I think it would be incumbent upon us to reach out to them specifically, to say, "What are your needs? What are your growth projections?" All of those things. Because, you know, if we don't target some of those frequent users of the system, I think we're going to miss the mark. We may catch a few through the process, but I think if we specifically target those groups and see what their needs are. Additionally, I didn't hear in the presentation where the staff engagement would be in terms of not just how we're doing things today, but how we're going to what their thoughts are about moving forward in relation to what the needs are in the community that they've currently heard. I mean, so there's a piece there that I think is important. And will there be any connection between the current city council's goals and objectives through the strategic planning process and your evaluation of what is needed as well?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. This is this will be the second one of these processes that I've been through specifically with Parks and Recreation, and was very happy with the outcome of the last one. I will say for the public that, at least in my experience, we learned a lot from it. And, you know, some of us only we hear information from groups, different groups of people. But when you actually go out and go through this process, there's a lot to be learned. In my last organization, we thought we were doing most things right as it related to community events, and we learned a lot from that. Yeah, people liked those, but they wanted something more close to home in their neighborhood parks as well. And we had no plan at all to address that. So I think this is a good thing. And it's been a long time coming. So thank you for your for your work in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. My council members made a lot of fine points. It wasn't not too many years ago when we were chopping as much money as we could out of the budget and dropping positions and freezing positions. And we are fortunate enough to be in a much better position, and we hope never to see those days again. Councilman Papano mentioned, you know, the greenery, and I think he mentioned it past a long time ago, but you mentioned some of the vines that have excessive growth nature, and it would be really good to see those things go away, even if it was chopped away with at a little bit at a time. There's also, as you can see by the displays in front and back of you, that we are working on perhaps some of the things you would be looking at and needed to be aware of. And I would also mention that there's items like the Littleton Center and Chabola Center that they get a lot of use in our community, and they need a lot of help. Measure Q is, you know, can be very good for could be very good for our community if managed correctly. You know, going back to my theme of work being concerned about the budget, I do support this, even though it's a large sum of money in my eyes. But it's also much better to plan ahead and make good use of the money moving forward than it is to do piecemeal work that generally never works out well. I will make the last statement that I have is that, although I feel it is your responsibility to give us other funding options, I am a dead-set no on giving the bank 50% of our money for any one said project to get it done early. I don't think that's a wise use of the community's funds. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. And thank you, Barbara. Any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember, any other comment from any council member? If it's not, then I would like to recommend that action. Adopt a resolution number one, authorize the acting interim city manager to award a professional service contract to HRA Landscaping, Architecture and Planning for a Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Number two, authorize the acting interim city manager to enter into a contract with HRA Landscaping, Architecture and Planning in the amount of $199,569. Number three, authorize a 10% project contingency in the amount of $20,000. Number four, the Parks and Recreation Director to execute a contract change order within the approved contingency. Number five, appropriate $219,569 in the Parks and Recreation Fund, Fund 006, for the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan project, and $219,569 general fund, 001, and Measure Q transferred to the Parks and Recreation Fund. May I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next agenda item is H3 Public Work Department, subject Chabola Skate Park Alternative Selection. Agenda report, Mr. Saling.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try not to steal too much thunder from the presentation, but essentially, about a year ago, last April anyway, the council considered allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds that the city received, essentially some COVID money from the federal government. And as part of that, $620,000 is what the council allocated toward this Chabola Skate Park project. Now, that was predicated on hiring a consultant and essentially a like-for-like replacement of the existing mechanical or whatever you want to call them, elements, modular, thank you. I knew it was M, but I got the wrong M. Modular elements that were existing at the skate park. However, there was a lot of public comment that evening about something maybe more permanent, a concrete-type skate park. And the council voiced some support for exploring that option. So I think you're going to see some of that tonight. And without further ado, I will introduce our deputy director and city engineer, John Griffin, to begin the presentation. I think he's got some consultants with him as well. So, oh, nope, you don't. Okay. All right. It's just you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're going to just give you a very brief background on the project. The outreach has been conducted to date, the options in front of you, and then staff's recommendation, and then open for questions. As Mike mentioned, you know, we started with a replacement in kind, just a simple modular facility, and that was funded for via the ARPA plan. And at that meeting in April, you know, as Mike mentioned, we had a good, robust input from the community and wanted us to explore something more permanent. Just for background, this was the general concept of the modular equipment, and just a very simple, just resurfacing the existing concrete that's out that was out there, and put in a, you know, a few few new features, and that estimate was roughly $620,000. So moving forward, we retained American Wrap Company, who prepared the original modular layout, and we had them conduct public outreach for us. So the first thing they did is they held a public meeting on September 11. And at that public meeting, they provided three sample skate parks with various components. And at that meeting, the team provided the community members, there was about 25 total members of the community there, provided them with thoughts to vote on various components that they would like to see in a skate park here. And if desired, we have the three boards here. We can pull them out for further investigation. But those will just indicate what the community desired. Along with that public meeting, American Wrap Company also conducted an online survey for feedback of the skate park components. Taking those two large pieces of information, they took this feedback and created an expanded park option that included many of the requested features. For example, the new rendering, which you see here. For example, the new rendering, which you see here, it includes a half-pike, half-pipe and bold corner to replicate a bowl. One of the features that the community requested was a bowl, but that was just a, it was so large, and that was, the half-pipe and bold corner was meant to facilitate a similar feature, but allow for more other, allow for other components that the community desired. The rendering also allows for skaters to work on their flat ground tricks and also provides beginners a lot of area for them to learn how to skate. As you can see, this, the expanded skate park option more than doubles the size of the existing facility and will also provide access to the restroom at the Gore Aquatic Center by opening the area to the east that is currently used, also to expand the facility. Further outreach was conducted by staff on January 10th, where we presented these two options, both the modular and the expanded options to the Park and Recreation Commission. The commission voted on a 3-1 vote to recommend the expanded option to City Council. A preliminary estimate of this expanded skate park is roughly $2.55 million, and there are several factors to consider when putting together this estimate. First and foremost, as you can see, the the facility is expanded more than twice of its current size, and by expanding that footprint, there's going to be the need for significant site improvements, including grading, tree removal, a lot more concrete, new lights, and then also a new wrought iron fence around the entire facility. Along with that, you know, permit facilities will be more expensive than modular equipment, but in the long term, the more permit facilities save on ongoing maintenance costs. State law also requires for construction that we pay prevailing wage to all all workers, so that's incorporated in our estimate. And then the project cost also includes engineering, inspection, and testing for the permit facility. So in conclusion, our staff recommendation is that council moves forward with option two, which is the expanded skate park option, and then authorizes staff to move forward with issuing RFP. So with that, we're here to answer any questions on the skate park.
Thank you, John, for your report, and council member.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. I did go to the Parks and Rec meeting where it was discussed, and I have spoken with some of the youth in the community. Last time at a council meeting here, a lot of them showed up, like some of them are here again tonight, to kind of value, and I just want to say, I appreciate you guys' input on this. You know, it's funny, I was just thinking to myself, I actually came before this council in 1997, in front of Boyce Jeffries, who was the Parks and Rec Director at the time, because there was a big need for a skate park, and I had a colleague and I that were trying to get something like that off the ground in the private sector. And so 27 years later, here I am with the opportunity to to do something. You know, a former council member, Tom Lawson, came and spoke at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and he brought up a couple of good points, and we're very good. The skate park that we had was really just a temporary thing. It was never intended to last as long as it did. It it was like the little spare tire donut that you put on your car. It's only intended for a temporary, and we like drove 100,000 miles on that little donut tire. So I think this is a long time coming to do something. I know that other cities like Lodi had a modular park. They're in the process of having to do some work with theirs. The modular concept to me is just, although it might be more inexpensive to start, the the maintenance of it can really get, can be, can be tremendous over time, and the life expectancy is just not there. So I think, you know, if you're going to spend money, you want to give you something that's going to give you a good life. We also, for me personally, I think it's important that as we talk about spending money, we've been talking a lot about things with parks tonight and the community. You know, everything just can't be about baseball and softball and soccer. I mean, there's a lot of sports, there's a lot of people in this community that do other things for activity that are not, don't require sports fields like that. So I think for me, it's a long time coming that we that we commit some some dollars to something substantial. I did want to clarify a couple of questions with you, John. I'm sure this is a yes, but this park is, we always mentioned skater this, skater that, but this is open to BMX and rollerblades, scooters, all the things that use skate parks, correct? There's no?
Our current rules only allow skateboards, but we can, once we decide on a design, we can take that to the Parks and Rec Commission and put together a set of rules for this new skate park and what the recommendations are.
I mean, that's important, because if you watch any of, like, a stream of sports now, the skate parks are not just used by skateboarders, so. And and having experience with this type of thing, I don't think there's anything there that's specific, I mean, they can't, they can't limit. So I definitely, that would be a big thing for me, to make sure that that's inclusive of those other.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with it. I'd just like to run it by the commission.
Yeah. On the, I noticed, so I'm looking at this this picture here, on the mini half-pipe, is that a modular unit or is that concrete? Because it looks like that's a modular unit, so that would be the one piece that's.
Everything is intended to be permanent, that there, you know, maybe some small pieces of equipment are modular. Again, with American Wrap Company having prepared this rendering for us, you know, a lot of what they provide is modular, so we are using this more to present a rendering of what the facility could look like, again, with the intention of everything being permanent.
So to be clear, like, if we approve this tonight, we're not going to, so to speak, build exactly what we're looking at. There could be some tweaks made. This is just kind of a conceptual of what it could be. We won't know until we go out to bid, and there's some fine details that could be, right?
Correct, yes. Now, what you see here, 99% of it's going to be there. I mean, will it be an exact layout if it is as it is now? You know, that will be all part of the design process, but the features that are here, that's that's the vision.
Okay. And you mentioned new lighting. Did the old skate park have lighting, Mr. Celeste?
It has existing lighting from the volleyball court that was once there.
Okay. So, and I think it's important to mention when people, you know, a lot of times we talk about projects up here, and the public is just like, wow, why does it take so much money? You know, like, I know it's a lot of concrete, but, you know, I just had, you know, such-and-such yards port at my house, and it was only 10,000 bucks or whatever. People just, when you're in government long enough, you realize that it's just, it's a different animal. Government projects just cost more. I mean, you have prevailing wages, as was mentioned. There's a lot of preliminary stuff that goes into stuff like this that doesn't happen in the public sector. What we can always do to ensure that we are getting the best value for the taxpayer is that we just make sure that we, and I think this council does a good job at it, is just making sure we go out to bid, that we we get competitive bids, so we know we're getting the best dollar. We're not just going to go out and spend two and a half million dollars without, you know, price shopping, I think, so at least I wouldn't. So I would, the only I would leave was just, I would like to hear from any of the actual skateboarders that are here tonight, if I would encourage one of you to come up and make a public comment before this item's over, to mention if there's anything in here that you see missing, anything that you think should be added. Now would be the time to speak up. So that's what I have for now. Thank you.
You do need to fill out a comment card if you would do, please. If I may, since I'm already chatting and I just jumped in there, will this encroach on the existing pool space?
Yes, it will. It will take up the area to the north of it, and what we will do is tie into the restroom that is located, is attached to the current building of the concession stand.
Yeah, I noticed that in the agenda report. That's that's a really quality thing, actually. I also, continuing with my theme about money, this is a 1.7 remaining of the 2.2 from the ARPA funds, so this is going to affect our overall budget in a minimally, considering the amount of money that's being asked by staff for us to spend, so that's also quite a positive. I'm glad to see that, I support option two. I think if the city needs to have the type of things that can help draw people to this community, it's one of the things financially we really lack. I think this can actually help do that for people from Lodi and maybe Outgrow, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my question kind of dovetailed with that. It references in the staff report bringing events. We could have Park and Rec hosted events there. I was never a skater, always had bad ankles, but can anybody kind of tell me about what the potential is for that? Are we talking comparable to softball tournaments, or, you know, what's that look like?
Well, we'd like to have a couple of events. We'd like to work with a couple of different organizations. One, we'd like to work with the Youth Commission. We haven't approached them yet. We didn't know exactly what design we'd have. Like to have a grand opening, possibly have some competitions to start off with, and then I'd bring Jackie in, and then we'd discuss bigger events like that, once we find out what design is approved.
Okay. Ballpark, any idea how many people we're talking about participating in those once we kind of get rolling with it?
Sorry, I haven't.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
First up is Harry Wenzel.
Evening, Council. It's always encouraging when people are thinking about money. I, too, went to the meeting with the commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, some really smart guys on that, and I'd like to see those guys, you know, continue and maybe get more involved in the city, because there are some really smart guys there. Anyway, while we're talking about money, interesting to me was on the RFP. We talk about a set criteria for choosing a vendor, okay? But money is not really going to be the big factor, but I'd like to draw some reality to that. The minute the money came out when we were at the Parks and Rec Commission, it swayed everything. They started looking at, well, this one for one point, this for one point. And my comment there was, you know, I mean, this is like 50 police cars, or maybe we should compare these things when we think about it and say, well, what are we doing here? I mean, what does common sense say in terms of, you know, should we take a different approach to it? So another another data point I'd like to bring up is that one of the suggestions, there were a couple of suggestions there, which was interesting, they haven't really made it here. One is to move the skate park across the street and, you know, expand it, 2.5 million, that's a lot of money. And I don't know, as Mr. Farmer says, it's a different animal. I realize that. You get in big corporate, that's a different animal. You get in your own, your own space, and it's a different animal. But when you get in your own space and it's your own money, we tend to approach it differently. And so there's a data point for you. And I had an opportunity to, I was out looking at the slide the other day, had an opportunity to talk to some of the skaters in their own environment, and a data point there, like, yeah, good questions, they're good things. There was an idea that had come up at the commission meeting that perhaps putting a skate feature at each one of our parks, so that different, you know, skater could go take off and do some features at one park, do some features at another park. And I asked him about that, and the guy thought, yeah, that'd be pretty good, and you could kind of, you know, make a trek on your boards. And another data point, and I'm sure there's a good answer for it, but I just want to echo that from what I heard from the skaters, is why did we take the existing park down before we really had some kind of an alternative out there? I mean, did they need to take the whole thing down or whatever? And that's, that's not a money issue, but that's, it's a good point, and I'm glad the skater showed up. They're cool guys, and these guys, I tell you, they're, I mean, they're skiers, or they're scuba divers, or they're surfers, or whatever. We just, like Mr. Farmer said, we just don't look at that like football player, or baseball player, soccer player. So I'm glad they're getting involved. I see them here each time, and it's a lot of money, and I think that, and I guess my other point is, when we get to the bidding, I wish that the bids would be more transparent, because I don't think there's a council member can tell me what the bids were for the playground equipment. But I did talk to a citizen today, it was over my walk over at Walker Park, and I, and I asked him, I said, what do you think this costs? He was looking at the playground structure there, and he said, man, these things have got to be expensive. He said, I think $30,000. And and to me, to me, I would agree with that guy. It's like, I don't see it. I go on the internet, and I look at some of these things out there, and I'm like, wow, that's a lot. So I would like to see, whatever you do, when Mr. Farmer says shopping it is a good thing, I'd like to see all those bids had a discussion before the meeting that there are, well, that's the next topic. But anyway, I really would like to see, and I think it would generate interest, you talk about people coming to these meetings, it's intimidating to come to a council meeting, you know, it just is intimidating, I think, for the citizens. Very hard to catch up, it's very hard to collect your thoughts and then come say something up here. But this is part of what we pay you guys the big bucks for, is to work on this stuff. So, and thank you for everything you do, and thank you, the engineering, they do a great job.
Thank you, Ed.
Mayor, my address one thing. Regarding the equipment that was removed from the skate park, it had outlived its life. It, there was rust holes in it. We had an inspector come out, and as it, you know, we kept it alive as long as we could, and as soon as it became unsafe, we had to remove them.
Thank you.
I just came over here to, he brought up a good point about like scooters, bikes, and everyone being allowed. The community, I would say, is more than 50% scooters and bikes. So like, if they weren't allowed, like, most of Galt wouldn't be allowed to go to that skate park. And there's parks near us, too, like Lodi, that don't allow scooter riders already. Not their main skate park, it's more like a shop that has an indoor section, but, um, yeah, that's already a thing, so there's already less spots for us to ride. And lights, lights was a good point, too, because most of the time, for like me and my friends, when we go to the park, it's like near sunset, and the lights that are at Galt Skate Park aren't used ever. There's the light for the, like, the parking lot that sort of lights up one box. The rest of the skate park's pitch black once the sun goes down. I don't know why. I've heard rumors like that the lights broke, that they just don't put them on because they don't want you there late. And days at the skate park should be open, it's locked up, because we still have some obstacles there, like a box and a rail, even though we got the ramps removed, but it's always locked up, and we have nowhere else to ride. So when we go out riding at spots around town, we get into trouble with cops or owners of like businesses and stuff, but we're not even, we're not allowed to go into the skate park either, it's trespassing, and the city has come up to us and told us to leave. And then cops have told us they'd rather us go to the skate park than go to the schools, so it's like, we're just, we're not wanted anywhere at the, at the moment. So like, even if we don't put a lot of money into the skate park, just getting it done sooner than later would also be like a big thing. These two skate parks right here, they don't really fit any category for any riders I know, advanced and beginner. None of us really ride bowls. It's called vert for skaters or park for scooters, but we don't really ride any of that. The skate park behind me is perfect for all the beginners and advanced riders that I know, whether they're on scooters, skateboards, bikes. We prefer rails, boxes, smaller ramps like these, just because that's what we were used to with our last park and what we grew to like. So like, if we did get a brand-new skate park that was built like that, I think it would just be less enjoyable than something smaller, cheaper, that we would have a lot more fun at, you know? That's kind of about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Arthur Lopez.
Chris Brosman.
Go ahead, Chris.
For the opportunity to speak. I voiced before, I am a fan of the skate park, to be frank with you, because I do agree with Sean's comment earlier. Not everybody's made for a baseball field or a foosball field. I am a believer of the concrete. I think that that's the way we need to go. I am a believer of the concrete. I think that that's the way we need to go. I did attend the planning meeting as well, or the other meeting. And it was interesting that I thought, when they took the dollars out of the picture, and to me, I don't know that that would have been the direction that I would have given that council, is to take the dollars out. To me, they need to be thinking about the dollars. We all need to be thinking about the dollars. 2.5, I'm fine with, to be honest with you. It's a big number. I went, ooh, when I heard it. But reality, we're looking at $5 million for three baseball fields. Two and a half looks pretty reasonable. We got a lot of baseball fields, we don't have any skate parks. I am puzzled by staying on the same footprint. To me, that area is too small for a skate park. And I'd like to see it moved to an area that would give more direction. There's a lot of been conversations in town about doing, you know, a water feature, where the kids can go and dance in the water popping up and down. But, you know, to me, that would be a natural area for it, being connected to the pool, having a water feature. To me, the skate park should be open. We shouldn't have a six-foot wall around it. We got a concrete structure, guys. I'd rather have them try to destroy that concrete structure than the individual businessman that puts up a wall and suddenly has a board riding down it, because they're locked out of it. I don't know what the feature of having a six-foot fence around something. Are we protecting the skaters, or are we protecting the concrete? Maybe we can spend 2.4 instead of 2.5. And the last comment for me, and maybe I missed this, was the overview. We have a lot of plans on the agenda. I mean, we've talked about a lot of things. I come to almost every council meeting. And of course, I'm a numbers guy, and I kind of look at it and go, okay, where does this all fit in? And to me, that needs to be taken into consideration as we roll these out, instead of rolling them out of separate things, going, okay, as a council, what's the number one thing that you guys want to see done with these dollars from measure Q? And I think we've addressed that with being landscaping and lighting type development. But okay, now what's the number two priority that you have? And where are you going to allocate those dollars towards, or where are those dollars going to come from? What's the number three? What's the number four? I like the master plan. My dear lady came up earlier. We did one in 91, 30 years, it's probably a long time overdue to redo one. But I'd be really curious to what we did with the one in 91. Did we actually follow it? Or did we pay $200,000 for a neat piece of paper that ended up on a bookshelf somewhere? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for the feedback. Any other comment?
Yeah, I wanted to make a couple of comments to Chris and also to Harry. Going back to cost things, yeah, I mean, I'll admit, I was one of those guys that'd come up here before, you know, when I used to come to council meetings, foreign counsel, and I was like, first, Brandon, how much to do what? And then when you start seeing, you know, the cost of what public projects cost and all the, like I said, the preliminary stuff that goes into them, it's just not like a private project and things just cost more. So I feel like, you know, all we can do is to look out for taxpayer money up here is when we decide to do something, that we just make sure that we enter the marketplace knowing that we're getting the best price for that public project that we can. And anybody that would dispute that we don't do that up here, doesn't pay attention enough meetings, at least that I'm at, because I'm the guy that's been up here arguing about, you know, getting $10,000 or $15,000 more for a used bucket truck or something. And sometimes I, you know, hammer on staff a little too hard, but I think we're all up here trying to be, you know, stewards of the, of the, of the public dollar. So regarding the fence that Mr. Brosman, I think with this particular space, the fence was important, because you get, you know, a skateboard flies off from under his feet, and it could go off into the middle of the street, you know, and a car could run over it. So there's, there's a very close proximity to the street, to the skate park in this particular location. The fence is important. It's not more about keeping people out, it's more containing elements. You know, maybe a kid from the Aquatics Center just comes running over and just runs in front of a skateboarder, whereas with the fence and the gate, they have to come through the gate. So I think it's more just controlling the safety aspect of it. I like Mr. Brosman's point about the location, and maybe if this thing is, you know, we're talking about 26 is when this thing could take place, get built. Maybe we should look at, I mean, you know, we got the old Boys and Girls Club property across the street. That'd be a great spot. I mean, we wouldn't need to use the whole thing, but I think if we are ever to visit a splash pad, which I know that's a different discussion, but maybe using the skate park area that we're talking about now would be a natural extension of the Aquatics Center. So maybe we should be thinking a couple of steps ahead about the location. I personally would like to see, you know, we can still go out to bid, and we can still approve, you know, moving forward on this project. But maybe, you know, maybe we should be looking at, you know, somewhere in the nearby area as an alternate location and see if that would affect the cost dramatically one way or the other. Mr. Brosman made a great point on that. Lastly, I'll just say that, yeah, that, you know, I'm happy that this council's been doing some diverse stuff. With, you know, we recently, you know, got some pickleball courts, we got a foosball, you know, which I never even heard of that before until it got put in. But I think it's important that we have a diverse mix of things that we're doing for the community, and it's not just softball and soccer, like I mentioned before. So I do, I do like that we're doing that and we're giving some thought to that. So that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I like the project. I was able to get out to, I think, the first public outreach meeting, and it was pretty interesting. We actually did it right there at the skate park. I liked Mr. Brosman's idea about what it would look like in a similar location or location close by. I think one of the benefits of having it where it's at is that we have access to restroom. And if you, if you look, that's, that's going to be huge in terms of the patrons that come to that location. And so that would have to be mitigated at some level, I think. But it, but certainly, you know, an extension of the Aquatics Center would be nice with a splash pad. I don't know how, what that looks like moving forward, but I will say that they're not cheap to put splash pads in either. So it's, 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 it has to do with public, public projects and the costs. And, you know, in addition, the cost of materials today, as opposed to what it was even five years ago. And so that, it's certainly a good point. The other thing is, is just for the record, there was a Parks Master Plan update done in May of 2010 by Foothill and Associates. So the previous one that was mentioned was not the last one, but I will say this. Mr. Brosman brought up a good, good question. What are we doing with it? And, you know, I think that we use it, but the needs of the community change, right? And so if you were to ask people in 2010 about spending $2.5 million on a skate park, they may have a different reaction than we have today. And so I think that's why it's important to update those. And I'm excited about the opportunity to see what the community needs are and measure them up with the other community needs, which is our strategic plan and how that, what that looks like. So I would be in support of moving forward on the skate park, and I appreciate the, the community, Mr. Wenzel, and certainly all of our friends that have, that have spoken today, and look forward to some movement on this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any council member, any other?
Yeah, if I may, if I may, real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Public comment. Thank you, you know, for talking about the different uses. It's certainly great to hear from people that actually use the things we're, or do, do, or do not approve. So I'm sure that will get addressed directly. To Mr. Brosman, I like your point about the splash pad. Yeah, I know, you know, I'm complaining about budget and asking for more. But splash pad is definitely something the community has been asking for repeatedly for a long time. Taking a quick look at a map, you could go in, you know, in multiple spots near the baseball fields and add a skate park two or three times the size of what is being asked for now, without really encroaching on anybody's area. So I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to consider, but I also realize that, you know, when it comes to master plans and things like that, if we haven't made a final decision on what's going to happen with that property, you can't necessarily allocate a piece of dirt to a skate park that will get torn out in two years. That would be insane. But I do think it is a good thing to consider, so, you know, staff should maybe get us to finalize those ideas as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. The last thing, thank you for Mike Selling and John Griffin. Good report is self-explain everything in the report, and I will support an option two. If other council member know of a question, then I would like to ask, to approve, to ask a motion to approve this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, can I get clarification on something real quick, though? So what we're, what we're being asked to approve tonight is one of the kind of approximate designs, right? That's one of them? That's one of the things we're being asked for, right? So versus those versus the one, I didn't even see those, but the one I was looking at on my computer is actually that one. So what option number is that?
The one you're being asked to approve is the one that was in the PowerPoint.
Okay.
And again, the idea was we took the best parts and pieces of these three that have public input. And knowing that we couldn't get everything the community wanted, because again, we're looking at the footprint at the existing site, then encroaching a bit to the east.
So then my last question is, would it be possible to approve this item tonight, and moving forward with the process of getting bids, and not 100% locking down the exact location? I mean, is there still an option where we could, you know, have a discussion about looking at and see why this other area wouldn't work, or that way area wouldn't work, but we're still getting bids for that? We're still looking at the same footprint and it's concrete, whatever. Is that possible?
What we would do with the RFP is, instead of jumping straight into schematic design and design documents, first step would be look at other options or other locations, and then present a report to council that said, if you want to locate it, say it, you know, where it's at now. If you want to put it at the old Boys and Girls Club, if you want to put it, say, somewhere at the community park, how would that look and what would those, what would those costs be? We could present that. Now, of course, that would add to the scope, that would add to the schedule and add to the overall cost of the project.
But I think to spend $2.5 million, I mean, again, you say it could change, but I think if we're going, we're talking about building something that we hope is going to last us 20, 25 years, I think we should look at everything and exhaust all options. So I just would like to present to my council that I would support the option, but I would like to leave that open just in a way that Mr. Griffin described, just to make sure.
I support that.
All right, Mr. John, did you understand? Have we approved that, what we need to do?
I have a quick question, Mayor, if I may. What, what, by adding this in, and I, and I support it too, I think that looking at those other locations, and I wish I'd had that idea, or Mr. Brosman would have had that idea earlier, maybe you did, but what, what kind of time schedule would that, I don't want to say delay, would we push it back? Would it be pushed back six months, or? Because right now, we're looking at final construction potentially in 2026, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's probably, you know, a thumbnail guess, probably not too far off as far as a six-month schedule impact. It's going to depend on the location and what issues there may or may not be, that need to be mitigated, you know, if it were to be located at a different location, so.
Well, and maybe staff can come back, you know, in like a week and say, you know, look, we, we, I can tell you right off without even getting into the weeds on it, we can't use this site because this, these are legitimate reasons, and we're like, okay, yeah, you're right, those are, those are non-starters, right? And we can't use this over here. So maybe it doesn't have to be this, I just, I just didn't want to pigeonhole us into one spot if there's a possibility.
I'd like to comment on that. So I've given this thought, we've talked about moving the skate park. I believe the only option would be is to move it out to Walker Park, although it's not been planned for that. The reason why it wouldn't work at the old Boys and Girls Club lot is now you're in the backyard of all those homes that belong there. And I don't know if you know how loud that skate park gets, it's not something that I would want in my backyard. If you put it out at the sports complex, you again have the problem of the homes that are across the street. You could try and fit it into a footprint to the north of it. But any other park that, or any property we own is going to be surrounded by homes. So I did just do a cursory look to see what would work, and the only property that would work, and that I believe would be Walker Park, but you also have those homes behind it. So I think right now you have the school that's in use, the market across the street, our offices, and the, and the swimming pool. So you really don't have neighbors to disturb. Those were my thoughts as we looked at everything. I could not see a piece of property we could relocate this to.
We're talking like, what, four homes there on Maple Street? Is it Maple Street, right?
Well, the whole property goes, I'd probably say there's probably about five or six that might be affected.
I think my issue is just that property is just such a derelict property, you know? Since the Boys and Girls Club got tore down, it just looks crummy. I know part of it's a parking lot, but the big slab area just seems like such a waste.
It is, and I would, one day, love to see a community center there.
Mr. Slies, if we can keep that option to change, but then we, when if something comes up, anyways, can go to the council, then we will go from there, we will move or not.
Yeah, I just want to let you know.
Just keep that option in that, and we all, we all know if we can change, there can be a problem surrounding it. I don't think so, we're going to do that.
I mean, I don't want to delay the project longer. I, now that I'm thinking about it, I, Mr. Slies did mention, you know, there's been some really, now, I mean, we're talking like, you know, I know we keep talking about splash pad, maybe that could be five years. But, you know, there is, there is a concept, you know, that's been talked about, that someday the market property could look much different with some pavilion buildings and such. And the Boys and Girls Club property very much would be a great spot for a pavilion building of some sort to tie into the market property. So I guess if we put a skate park there, then that's a non-starter. So I don't know. I don't really want to get into weeds. I'm fine with it going in the spot where it's at now that I'm thinking about it. I think if it'll fit and it's that size, I think it's 10 times better than what we had before. I just don't want to go back to the donut wheel again. I just want to, I want to get a new set of tires all around and make it make sense. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Farmer. I would like to ask, have the motion to approve item number H3 as we discuss as a council?
Do you approve?
It's moved by Councilmember Papino, second by Councilmember Farmer.
And just to be clear, Councilmember Papino, your motion is for, for option two? As presented at the location presented?
Because, because Mr. Farmer's change of mind removes consensus for other spots, so by your, no others' comment, leaves it as default presented?
Yes.
Yeah, I second that motion.
And Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano. Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next, and the item H4, Gore Aquatics Center Water Slide Replacement Alternative Selection CIP 531. Mr. Selling.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Similar to the last item, the water slide, which has essentially been non-operational for, I think, going on three-plus years now. Part of the ARPA allocation was $250,000 by the council to hire a consultant and explore options for a new water slide. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Griffin again to do the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Just again, our agenda here for this presentation, quick discussion on background, review the public outreach. We will share the various options and the flume types that go with those options. Project schedule, share community input, give our staff recommendation, share with council what other options are available, and then finish with any questions. So Mike touched on these items, just again, the background on the inspections and the closure, and then the funding to get the project started. Public outreach. Our first, uh, we had several different public outreach opportunities. The first one was the, uh, public meeting in December where the, uh, city staff and our consultant team of RS&amp;M and two of the staff members from RS&amp;M, uh, Jim McClellan and Danny Stringer are here tonight, and they'll be giving part of the presentation too. Uh, we presented four, uh, options to the, to the community, and, uh, those four consisted of, option was, option one was a like-for-like replacement. Uh, option two was a third, roughly 30-foot tall, uh, slide. Option three was a roughly 40-foot tall slide, uh, single slide. Then option four was roughly a 40-foot tall slide, but two-slide option. So those four were presented to the community. Um, jumping straight to the results, the community preferred option three, which was the 40-foot tall, single-slide closed flume option, uh, followed by option two, which is the 30-foot tall, single-slide option. Uh, second option, or second, um, time for community input, we went to the Park and Rec Commission, and we again presented these same four options, uh, to the commission. Uh, when they first discussed and deliberated, uh, the, uh, commission wa, uh, voted two-two and could not, um, come to a, uh, an agreement on what was their recommended option. After a little further deliberation and, uh, suggestions from, uh, Director Solis to give it one more try, uh, the vote was changed to a three-one for option three. Uh, the third opportunity for public input was a public survey, and this was done online. Uh, so the handout that was provided tonight is the final output from that, uh, public survey. What we had is we had a total of 154 votes, uh, cast with option three receiving 64 votes, roughly 42%. Uh, option two, again, being the 30-foot tall slide was second, you know, 34 and a half percent. And then the like-for-like option three, uh, received 37 votes, roughly, uh, one in four. Uh, so with that, we're, I'm going to hand the presentation over, uh, and let Jim and Danny speak a little to the, the three primary options that were presented in the, uh, public outreach survey.
Hello, uh, my name is Danny Stringer. I'm a licensed civil engineer, and I'm here with Jim McClellan, architect, uh, with RSN. We're the consultants on this project. Um, so I'm going to briefly point out just a few of the features of these slides. This one, like John said, is a like-for-like replacement of what you have. It's a open flume. It's about 18 feet. You know, we think the one you have is about 18 feet. The slide path is going to be very similar. The ride experience is going to be very similar to what you have. The real only upgrade you'll get on this one is you can see they got a shade structure on the top there. Uh, the existing one doesn't have a shade structure, just nicer for lifeguards and while you're hanging out up there. So, yeah, like John said, that one has the least amount of votes, but that is the least impact to the infrastructure. Good. All right, so option two, uh, we're going 10 feet higher, so 30 feet tall. This one's a closed flume slide as opposed to the open flume. Same thing, we got linear steps, we have a shade structure on the top. This one's going to have a slightly longer, uh, ride time and, uh, ride length. The target age range is roughly the same. You know, there's a 48-inch, um, height requirement for each of these slides we're talking about today. So all the slides can be ridden by roughly the same people. Um, and same thing, this 30-foot slide, minimal impact to the infrastructure as long as it's closed flume. Uh, just other colored options, so something to note, just like the, uh, skate park earlier, these are not the exact slides that we will be getting. This is more of a basis of design. And then we will put out a bid and finalize the design. All right, option three, 40 feet tall. So like I said, the existing slide is closer to 18, so this is more than double the existing slide. So you're getting, um, you know, the same features. We got linear steps, we have a shade structure on the top, but your ride length is significantly longer, your ride experience is significantly different. Um, it also takes up a much larger footprint on the site. You can see that this is a rendering of the site here at Gora. And significantly more foundations, and it takes up more surface area, but, yeah. All right, and same thing, uh, they have different color options for all these.
Thank you, Danny. Um, again, as, as Danny mentioned, one of the big considerations that we looked at is the closed flume versus open flume option. Um, again, recognizing that budget is a very significant priority. Uh, the benefit of a closed flume is that it allows us to reuse a lot of the, it allows us to reuse existing piping, uh, in place. If we were to go with an open flume option for anything larger than 18 feet, uh, we would have to rip out and replace all the existing piping along the entire pool deck. And that would be a, what, that would be potentially as a, much as a 50% higher project cost. So with that, that's part of the reason why you see a lot of the options are, are closed flume, just to recognize that we want to be, we want to be very conservative in our costs. Schedule. Our overly aggressive schedule is to have this pool slide ready by the start of next pool season. It's 15 months from now. We are looking at what we anticipate, an aggressive schedule of roughly taking us 17 months from where we are today. Uh, we can try, we're going to do our best to squeeze, but it's just more of a, um, just managing expectations. Right now, the way it looks, this project will not be complete until, uh, the middle of the, uh, next year's, uh, pool season. Um, before we get to actually making a decision on what height, we just wanted to give a little preference for, uh, the public and for the council members, what you have here is a photo of the site. The, uh, the pool deck is roughly 16 feet high. And for reference, there is a light standard out there, so that light standard is roughly 34 feet high. So the option three, which is the, um, option recommend, yeah, I'm sorry, option two. Thank you. Option two, the one recommend, I'm sorry, option three recommended by the community is going to be slightly taller than the, uh, height of that light standard. Again, just to summarize, the community recommendation is for option three, 40-foot tall slide. Again, those are results from the community workshop in December, the Park and Rec Commission and the community survey. Uh, staff's recommendation is going to diverge from what the community has said. And we're going, we recommend option two, we recommend the 30-foot tall option. Um, several reasons, it, you know, as Danny mentioned, the 30-foot tall is, 30-foot tall slide is, you know, one and a half times the existing slide now is going to be an improvement and an enhanced feature over what was current, what is currently there now. Um, it's still consistent with the surroundings. It will not, it'll, it'll blend in fairly well. Again, recognizing too, that budget is a primary consideration. That will also, uh, strike a better balance for our budget, knowing that we've got a number of capital projects we want to fund over the next several years. Uh, also to the Park and Rec Commission, you know, when they initially deliberated, that was a 50-50, uh, vote for option two versus option three. And lastly, I'm sure as you saw with those renderings, that 40-foot tall option is very visually shocking. It will affect the, uh, operations of the facility. You saw where the foundations are. That impacts the ability to navigate around, uh, the recreation pool versus a competition pool. So with that, those are the primary reasons why as staff, we recommend, uh, the 30-foot tall pool option instead of the 40-foot tall option. Uh, other options that council has, uh, to choose from, obviously there is the, the option just remove what's out there now and then not replace, and we would not have a slide. That's always an option. Um, another option is to choose the recommendation or choose the, um, community's input, which is the 40-foot tall option. Uh, option one is another choice, which is to replace in kind, uh, roughly 18, you know, 16 to 18 feet tall. And then option four, which was not presented to the community, uh, in the survey, we could go back to the two-slide 40-foot tall option. That's going to be a significantly costly, much costlier project. You're having to, um, reconstruct, uh, the landing pool area, and you're going to have to remove and replace all the existing piping. So we don't even have an estimate for that. Um, you're just looking at substantially larger than what even the, the 40-foot tall, single-slide option is. Uh, so with that, we are open to any questions, uh, you may have.
Uh, thank you, John Griffin. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, just for the clarification, uh, we have four options, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and just for, I, I know you explained on the report very well, what's the difference between option two and three? And I believe staff recommending option two, is that true?
That's correct. Yes, we recommend.
Okay, and what's the difference between option two and three?
The.
Just the difference.
Uh, difference is the height.
And that's the only difference, uh?
10 feet, and then with that, there is also a, a cost difference. The staff report provided for, uh, in order magnitude price difference, you're going to see roughly a $300,000 price difference in construction as well.
And the price difference is maybe due to the height?
Correct. There are just, as you saw with the two renderings, the foundations are much more substantial. There's a lot more equipment and material to purchase, so, uh, 10 feet in height and then a lower price. Those are the two main differences.
And then on the report, uh, most of the community, they recommended option three. And staff really look at, at the budget, and staff also look up at the, I think, intimidating due to that's why, that was the exact reason staff and RSN recommending from option three to two?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. That's why the clarification I would like. All right, any other council member?
Yeah, thank you, John, for the presentation. Um, I did a lot of thinking about this today, and, and thank you for the, all the answers to the survey. I wanted to read a couple of them that kind of share my sentiment, was my concern with the larger. Um, one person said, "The largest 40-foot option seems too scary for younger kids." Another one says, "I think the slightly larger one would be amazing, but it would just be too big." Um, this one said, "The 40-foot is very intimidating to my eight-year-old. Please consider going with the smaller." Um, and then this one too, um, they liked either, but they said that they didn't have, the costs were noted in the survey. So I think, um, you know, the percentages on the survey were very close, but I think if you would have said the difference between the 40 and the 30 is $300,000, people would say, whoa, you know, maybe the, you know, that might have changed it slightly. But I think my concern mainly is just that, like you said, the 40-foot, the way it looks, I mean, that's huge. You're talking about a 40-foot deck, and then you're talking about the, the shade structure on top. If you, I went out there and looked at the light poles today, as you saw in the drawing there, and I'm like, that is just going to like overpower the whole skyline. I might, some people might be like, oh, that's awesome, you know, but that's adults talking. I mean, I remember as a kid going to the golf pool, and there was kids that wouldn't go off the high dive, and that was like a 12-foot or maybe even 10. They would go up the ladder, and then they would freak out, and they'd want to come down the ladder. What I see is a very realistic possibility is you get kids, and I just looked up the average height of six-year-olds, six-year and eight-year-olds, so it's possible that six-year-olds and seven-year-olds could be between 42 and 49 inches. Eight-year-olds are 47, 54, that's an average. So you're going to get eight-year-olds, possibly a little younger, that could, that could meet the height requirement on this. They're going to go up those stairs on the 40-foot, which is this, you know, it doesn't zigzag, it just goes up and up and up. And they're going to get the top, and they're going to be like on this huge thing, and they're going to be freaked out, and they're going to want to come down. So then you're going to have this bottleneck, you're going to have kids wanting to go down the stairs. I see that as a safety problem. I want to approve something I feel is going to fit the majority of the kids. Um, I, I think that option, you know, the, the 30-foot slide is, is way better than what we had before. It looks, the way it's designed, it just looks like it fits the, the, the footprint better. I think it's going to be a great experience for the kids. And for 300 grand, I mean, you roll that 300 grand over into the skate park project with the 600,000 from the ARPA, and now you're talking about a million dollars of the skate park's cover. That's, you know, that's a big percentage of, of the skate park cost. So I think that 300 grand for me could be better used. So I am heavily supportive of, of the 30-foot slide, which is the, uh, option two, and that's what I have at the moment.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Uh, I certainly want to hear from public comment, but, uh, John, I have, thank you for the presentation, very well done. And, yeah, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Solis for meeting with me this last week on it. Um, the, the question I have is, uh, in terms of SEQA, um, is there going to be, or could there potentially be additional mitigation that we'll have to do between the 30 and 40-foot slides that you can? And again, I'm sorry you weren't prepared for that, that question, but is there going to be a difference there, do you think?
I wouldn't expect so, just, you know, just thinking about SEQA as far as the different aspects and, and studies that you typically have to do. Um, there might be something on the aesthetic side, but typically when you're replacing existing facilities, uh, you can go under a standard exemption. So that would be something that we'd have to look into, though, to give you a definitive answer. I wouldn't expect so, but possibly.
My, my thought was along the, um, area of noise mitigation, and I don't know if the 10 feet would make a big difference, but, uh, we're dealing with state rules and stuff. And so I just want to make sure that, uh, that there wouldn't be an additional, uh, mitigation that we would have to do between the two. Does that make sense?
I'm going to ask our consultants if they're familiar with anything, because typically when you look at a noise study, I mean, it's a distance to receptor, so to go up even higher would, you know, essentially increase that distance. So I wouldn't expect so, but I don't know for. Okay, our, our interim CM is agreeing, so.
Okay, that, that was just a concern. I, I, I too think, uh, for all the reasons stated that, uh, the 30-foot is probably more appropriate, and I want to listen to the community, but I would agree that if price tags weren't attached, then, then I certainly think that may have, certainly for me, would have made a big difference, and so, um, anyhow, like I said, I, I've got a couple of other questions, but I'll wait for public comment to be completed.
All right, do you know any public comments?
Harry Wenzel.
It's good to be back again. Yes, I will talk about numbers. Let me talk about logic, okay? Um, I don't know that we really want to go down the road of saying, well, we're going to save, uh, $300,000 on this option, and we could put it towards this option over here. It's sort of like when your wife comes home and says, "I just saved a $700 on buying this brand-new sofa," and it's like, how do we do that? Well, the other one costs $1,500, okay? I, I wouldn't want to go down that road for logic. Um, I would like to clear up one other item, because it fits right into what I want to talk about. And that is that when the ARPA appropriation was made, that was a complete project. And I don't know, did I misunderstand, um, that it was just an estimate? I mean, it's an estimate, true, for the $250,000, but it was an, an estimate in its entirety, okay? And so I want to move along with the logic of these things, and one is, everything just costs so much now, okay? Uh, that doesn't represent me. I, I like to see scrappy guys, like a Sean Farmer, when he gets up there and challenges it. I, I know Sean, you know, that it's, you have to get the, there's all different kinds of beasts out there. But the beast that's the worst is the ones where you just say, you accept, well, everything just costs so much. Because let me tell you, there's guys buying islands, there's guys buying limousines, there's guys buying mansions on this whole concept that we have when we spend public money. So, um, I'm all for, I'm all for more transparency, uh, however, however we go, okay? I'm more for transparency. I would not like to see it slip off the way it did with the playground equipment. And I still am waiting to see what the bids were on the playground equipment. We have not seen that, okay? And I think that, I, I don't even know if that's legal, maybe with the, the Brown Act or with the bidding laws or whatever. Is that legal to say everybody's got a bid, and then we don't see the bids as the public? You know, we're supposed to be able to see the information where we can hold the, uh, officials to account for their handling of the money in the city. So with that, I, I would like, I like what Mike did, where he stepped through and he said, "When this, when you go 10 more feet, it's this more piping, it's this, it's this." But on this project, I think I'd feel more comfortable to say, well, we came up with 250,000, and it was, it was like everything. And then, so how did we get that? There must have been a back of an envelope somewhere we could dig up. And then how do we go from what we have, you know, in the, in the ARPA allocation? How do we go to, uh, what is it, 800,000 for? How do we go to, what is it, $800,000 for option two? Or whatever the 20-foot, anyway. How do we go from that number to the next number? What is there happening? And a good example of how detailed it could get, I think it was Mr. Griffin did a detail of the cost railroad crossing. That was great. That blew me away. There's detail, there's going to be, we have to get with the cemetery, we need to do this, we need to think about that. And you could see where all those costs fall into place. So that's kind of my data points on this. And so I would like to say, it's a little unclear to me, are consultants going to be the ones doing the bids? Are we going to be the ones doing the bids? Are we going to see all the bids? And I think that when we get to this kind of money here, we should be talking about fiberglass or polyethylene. I did send a memo to the team and I pointed out that there is a place, I only found one place, and I had heard tonight, I'd heard there was 40 places doing pool slides, but I couldn't find them on the internet if there are. But there is a place, it's in the south, I don't know, Alabama or somewhere. And they have quite a going operation. They were, they had a commercial grade, they call it a commercial-grade slide. And this one has four chutes on it, but it's about the same height as what we have out there today. That was $128,000. And then they have other options, plus they talk about customization. Now, if there's an off-the-shelf option out there and we need to put some people on airplanes to go see what's going on or we can find installations here, maybe that's another option that we have. But that's my data points for you. And I'm glad you guys are making these big decisions and not me. It's a hard decision, but thank you. And thank you, engineering. You guys do a great job. But you know me, I'm always challenging everything, so thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Chris Brosman?
Yes, I get to replace or follow up with Harry again. So I appreciate everything he says, because I do, the cost savings is kind of garbage. Again, when we bring this up to the commission, dollars should be brought up. When we're talking options, option A, option B, option C, dollars should be coming up. You want to talk transparency, talk transparency in dollars, guys. So that's what you're spending is our public dollars. And I'd like to see A is going to cost this amount, B is going to cost this amount, C is going to cost this amount. I still look at it and I look at it and I'm, you know, we're coming out with timelines now. You know, we've got a timeline on Park, right? So we can't give six months, but I respect that. But we're pushing timeframes. Do we have all these dollars allocated to spend for these projects already? Are they all fully funded? We allocated 2.6 towards the Spark Park. I don't know exactly what these dollars we're going to be allocating towards here. It seems like we're on a timeline crunch, guys. We're also on a budget crunch. You know, I don't know if we're going back to bonds, if we're going back. I know, you know, a lot of different ideas have been floated out here. But the citizens of Galt have blessed us with $4 million a year to spend towards this. You guys are going through $4 million like drunk sailors, too. Repeat my comment of earlier years. I agree. I'm very happy to see the city look at it and go, okay, we don't want a 40-foot tower and we want a 30. And Sean hit on a lot of the reasons for me. But you know, if we go 40, I think we should put a water tower on top of it and call it Galt 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, sir.
No more.
No more? Oh, my apologies. So because of the previous topic encroaching into the pool area, will the overall number of people allowed in the pool be reduced?
No, we're not.
Okay. The stairs that are on the proposed option two are circular. I forget the term of that. Are those more hazardous than the straight ones? And can they be changed without undue cost? Okay, I would like, personally, I would like to see that. I find these type of stairs with rambunctious children in this style to be more hazardous. I would also think, you know, for perspective, I believe a telephone pole. Did I miss something? Okay, that's okay, great. I believe a telephone pole is 40 feet tall. You know, and it reminded me of when we do homes, that we can't put two-story homes next to one-story homes. We have to be some kind of transition. And this seems to be, a 40-foot structure seems to be that kind of out of step with the structures and buildings around it. So, and also continuing with my theme of accounting, the verbiage, and of course, staff could have not known what would get passed and what not would get, what would not get passed. But the verbiage in the third paragraph is basically the same as the skate park where they're appropriating 1.7 million of the remaining 2.2 million. Well, there can't be 4.4 million, because there's only remaining 2.2 million. So where will these funds be coming from if we've already allocated the previous item from ARPA?
That was at the time, back in April. There was 2.2 million total and then there was 1.7 remaining. So when the council made those, you know, amounts, approved those amounts, 250 for this and 620 for the skate park, it was out of that 1.7 then. So if you look at the fiscal analysis section for this item, you'll see that the 250 from ARPA would be coupled with 950 from Measure Q for this project. Whereas if you look at the Chabola, it was, there were some parks capital funds. And the reason for that is because we can use parks capital funds for new facilities. We cannot use those funds for replacing of existing facilities. So we have to use Measure Q, essentially.
Thank you for that clarification. That's all I have.
I want to make a couple of comments. I know, thank you, Mr. Brosman and Mr. Wenzel. I, you know, we appreciate you guys being up here and making comments about the money. To be honest with you, I love you, Mr. Brosman, but spending money like a drunken sailor is a little offensive to me. I'll be honest with you. I just want to tell you, friend to friend, because I don't think that's what we're doing. If any thing is more conscious about money, when I go up here and make decisions, it's me. What I want to remind people tonight is we're just basically approving the concept of moving forward. The bid still, this thing still has to go out to bid, then the bids have to come back. And we have to decide whether, which one of those bids to take. Or we can decide not to take any of them and just decide that we don't have, we don't want to spend the money. So this is not the final final tonight. This is just simply putting staff on the trajectory to say that we want to replace, that we want to move forward with replacing the slide. But it's not the final final. You know, things take time to build. The skate park, as it stands right now, won't even be done till '26. You know, that's, we're barely into '24 and that's two years away. We have to be planning for the future. So that's why we're making the decisions, because these decisions take time to implement. We're not spending money that we don't have. We have solid projections for Measure Q. People voted for Measure Q. That money has been earmarked for Parks and Recreation. What I don't want to do is be two years from now and people be complaining, saying, how come we don't have a water slide? I thought two years ago I voted for this, this, you know, this thing that's going to make Parks and Rec better and I don't see anything for my money. People want to see stuff for their money. We're trying to have a balance of new projects and deferred maintenance. The water slide is a deferred maintenance project. Even though it's a new slide, it's repairing, replacing something that was old and no longer usable. Same goes for the skate park. There's also a laundry list of other deferred maintenance that we're getting to. And some of those will not be visible to the public, unfortunately. But it has to be a balance between things the public can see and the things that people can gratification for, for their money, and also things that they may not see. We're going to balance those, too. Mr. Solis and I have had this conversation many times and I think there should be a balance. The discussion about the 300 grand, you're not really saving. I do look at it saving. If I look at saying, well, if I'm going to spend $10,000 on a new car, but instead I spend $9,000 on a new car and make a compromise because I need to repair my fence that costs $1,000, that's how I look at it, is taking that money and moving that money over to help pay for something else. So again, I'm very conscious of the dollars. And to answer the other question is, we see every bid that comes to us. I don't have the playground bid in front of us, but I assure you, I can have Mr. Solis come back and show you where the council was shown the playground bid and what that was. There's been items that have come to us where we have had two bidders and we, we basically, the council, sometimes even on a split vote, have went back and said, no, we want you to rebid this. And then, for example, the building project for the roof, we came back, we had nine bidders. I mean, that was an example, we went from one bidder to nine bidders and we end up saving, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. So we are, we are definitely taking great care with taxpayer money when we go up here. But I also know that people expect to see something for Measure Q. And we can't wait five, six, seven years to make these decisions, because it'll be 10 years before they happen, so we have to start planning ahead. But I look forward to seeing the bid numbers on this stuff and so we can make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the risk of opening a can of worms, sorry, guys. I think that Mr. Wenzel and Mr. Brosman brought up good points. And in my conversation with the Park and Rec Director, I was a little confused on how much ARPA money we have already spent on. We've had to spend money to come up with designs and things like that. And how much ARPA money is left? And then also what total amount for Measure Q? Because when I looked at option two, which is the recommended option, it says $800,000. And so what I do in my mind is I say, okay, we've already allocated, you know, 250,000 or 265, maybe, to that. So then the total cost would be, you know, 800,000 minus 265 or something like that. And apparently that's not the case. And so can you walk me through that piece? And then if this is approved tonight, as staff's recommended, what is the balance of the ARPA funding that we have?
Yes, so the table that was in the staff part was meant to be, to give just general, overall construction cost. I'm forgetting the exact terminology. The overall project costs for option one is estimated $920,000. As Mike mentioned, the staff part talks about the total price for option two at 1.2 million.
Right.
So that is the $250,000 from ARPA. And then the remainder of the 950 from Measure Q. And then if we were to go with option three, we estimate that total project cost at 1.55 million dollars.
So approximate construction costs, there are additional costs that are included or that aren't included in that either?
Correct. Again, that was just the construction cost to give, just general guidelines. Again, the cost for RSM to put together what they've prepared to date, then the next step will be to put together the construction documents. And then contingency, we'll have to pay also the state. There is the State Division of Occupational Safety and Health Amusement Rights Section. They will be inspecting the ride before we're allowed to open it. So there, that gets put into the contractor's bid and then we pay the permitting costs to the state. So there's a lot of other things that went into that overall 1.2 million.
And I appreciate that. I would just ask that, at least for me, moving into the future, I appreciate the construction cost break broken out, but maybe then some more delineation of those other costs. And I understand that we're going to get another bite at this apple when bids come in and that whole process happens. But, but to the point of, and I believe that our staff is as transparent as we know how to be, right? I'm not questioning that. I just think for the general public to see it would be, it maybe in a different way would be helpful moving forward. So I'm not going to hold anything up here for that. But so that was just my point. And then lastly, if we were to approve this and then we've already approved the previous project or previous item, what are we looking at for balance of ARPA funding? And when do we need to have it appropriated by? And when do we need to have to spend it by?
So the remaining ARPA funds, we've done the revenue loss recognition. So we've already met the obligation for all the reporting for ARPA. So those will be in our general fund reserves now. So of the roughly 6.3 million that we received in ARPA, council's already approved almost 5.9 million in projects. So we have roughly 470,000 remaining from the 6.3. That's now in the, just our general fund balance. And then we'll provide updated Measure Q estimates with the mid-year budget that will be coming on the next council meeting. But we had almost 1.1 million that received last fiscal year. That's now in general fund balance for Measure Q. And then our current estimate that we provided was roughly 4.2 million. We have allocated, or minus what we've already approved in, for fiscal year '24 from the midterm budget that was approved last year. And there were a few other items approving Measure Q. There was about 1.89 million available for funding in fiscal year '24, including the fund balance from last year for that. So if we approved the recommended options for the skate park and pool slide, we would have roughly just under 300,000. And unless the Parks Plan approved, so somewhere around 100,000 remaining for fiscal year '24.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
And I'll just answer the question you also asked, which is, it has to be, ARPA has to be uncovered by the end of December, by December 31, 2024. And all of the monies have to be expended by December 31, 2026.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's not on, Matt. And the numbers you just gave us, that's, that's, that's obviously including the early stuff we did where we upped the landscaping levels and we added all the staff to Parks and Rec for mowing. We bought extra equipment. We actually hired some, we hired some extra positions, I think I just said that, et cetera, et cetera, right? That was all.
Correct. That includes everything that's been approved utilizing Measure Q so far for fiscal.
And that takes us through fiscal year '24?
Correct.
Okay, and what was, and I know, again, projections are projections, I get that. And we don't know, nothing's 100%. But there was also a number thrown at us at what the projected would be for Measure Q, getting into like '26, was it? Was it '26?
I don't remember. But it was, 4.2 million was in our current budget. I believe the current estimate's closer to 4.5 million for fiscal year '24.
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but I remember it was in part of the year financial, whatever. But there was, and maybe Amy, do you remember what that number was? We were talking about this today. It was north of 5 million by '26. HDL, right, that's what it was, yeah. So again, again, we're not trying to like, you know, say, well, we're going to have this much money, so let's just spend it all in advance. I mean, so we're really, we're really not spending that far in advance. The point I make is, we're just getting things going in the intermediate, in the short term. So anyways.
Yeah, thank you both, you gentlemen. You guys did a much better job than I've been trying to do all evening about highlighting the budget, so I appreciate it.
So I do appreciate the financial decision or information that you've elicited. And I appreciate the process that you've gone through on both these projects. When I talked to my appointee to the Park and Rec Commission, he was thrilled, because they had some stuff that they were given to dig into and they could, they could dig deep. And I wasn't at the meeting, but he described to me how the, and I don't know where the money was left out for a while of the survey, but he described desires changing a lot when the money came into the discussion. So that, that kind of, you know, at some point, it was in there, because that kind of drove his recommendation for the council. So I do appreciate the process. And with regard to the, which option would be? And with regard to the, which option would be preferable, I too agree that, you know, 40-foot tall water slide, while I can appreciate, you know, thrill seeking and, you know, whatnot, I could certainly see it to be intimidating to a good segment of the kids that we would hope to come use it. And, you know, frankly, having a footprint that's almost as big as the pool that it's sliding into and kind of overtaking the landscape. So I definitely think that Option 2 is really the only feasible thing for the space that we have and the, and the audience that we intend to use it. That's all I have.
All right, any other council member, any comments? If it's not, then I would like to make a last comment. Thank you, John Griffin. Thank you, Mike Selling for the report. And I will support an option 2. There was a, one reason is $300,000 lot of money. That's a public money as Chris Brosman mentioned and Harry Wenzel mentioned. All, we have to very careful what we using money. And one thing I'd like to clear for Mike, you know, anything, any bid we go, we most likely we bet up the bid and then we taking the bids and then we're looking at a cost effective and also looking who is the best qualified to do that job, right?
Correct. I mean, the terminology we use is lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And so that means when we do our due diligence, you know, I mean, are they the lowest price? Yes, that's kind of first and foremost, what would, you know, you would, in public contracting, you assign as the apparent low bidder. But then you do your due diligence and, you know, you look at are there any judgments or any pending legal actions against them, anything like that? You know, I mean, do they have proper bonding and all these sorts of things, right? That essentially shows that they are competent contractor. So yes, it starts with dollars, but it's more than just the lowest number, so.
Thank you, Mike. If council member, no comment and no public comment, then I would like to, may I have a motion to adopt a resolution identifying the desired alternative for the Gorakwadic Center water slide replacement project? May I have a motion?
Is that for Option?
If that's for Option 2, then I would like to amend that, that it does not have a spiral staircase. To make sure that's clear.
All right, Mike Selling, you understand. All right, may I have motion to approve?
We have a first.
I am, so moved.
It's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg. Second by Vice Mayor Lozano.
Just to clarify, was it a question or is it standard?
No, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that we are approving Option 2, but in the depictions, it shows a spiral staircase and they said it was easy to swap out. But I wanted to amend the, the motion to clarify on paper that we would ask for a standard staircase and not a spiral staircase for safety.
So that, that isn't a spiral though? Can I get clarification?
No, no, that's not, that's not the option. That's cool, that's a good.
And I, spiral staircase is on Option 1. Sorry, no, where is this?
So like, this is Option 2?
This is Option 2 and it's a standard switchback staircase.
Well, that's, okay, yeah, I don't have that, yeah, that's the design.
But Councilmember Farmer, I believe we are already clear with the staff what he was asking. That's why we make a motion.
Well, I'm just, I just want to clarify before I vote, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, it's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg. Second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion approved by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next in the item is communication.
None this evening.
Item J, city clerks report.
Aye, none.
The next item, comment by staff acting city manager, Mr. Solis.
Yes, Chief Kalinowski.
Mayor and council, tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., we'll be doing a version with Coffee with a Cop. It's going to be Conchas with a Cop at Aroma Bakery at 241 South Lincoln Way. Again, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. So we invite the public and staff and members of council to join the police department. The Aroma Bakery, we providing the coffee and the pastries available for purchase. Thank you.
Amy Mendez?
Good evening. Briefly, just wanted to update council on a couple of things on the economic development front. I know there's been quite a few rumors on social media in regards to what's happening with the Rite Aid location. And so briefly, wanted to give a quick update to let you know that we did put an article on the newsletter last week. The Connect with Galt newsletter went out on Friday and just tried to clear up some of the rumors that are out there. The building is still tied up in bankruptcy with Rite Aid and so the property owner is not able to put the property up for lease. So that building cannot be marketed yet for, to any retailers at this point. So we have been in close contact with the property owner and with the broker who will be representing the building. We will be marketing it at an upcoming trade show in Monterey in a couple of weeks. But really at this point, hopefully around March, we should have some movement on that. But just wanted to make sure that it is not going to be a cannabis dispensary and it's not going to be a homeless shelter. And there's been all kinds of things circulating out there, so. The other item, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that the Burger King location closed and that is being subleased by California Burrito. That location went up for sublease back in September and I had been in contact with the broker who was representing the property. The folks that ended up, and we met, we talked in San Diego at a trade show and I made sure to provide all of the fast casual and fast food users that would be potentially interested, that the community wanted to see. And California Burrito actually is subleasing a location from Burger King in Turlock and one in Sonora and this location. So having all three of them go to one user, I think, was financially more feasible for the property owner. So at this point, California Burrito has been in contact with us. They'll be submitting plans to do some improvements at the location and they hope to open in the next three or four months. And then the last one, just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that Consolidated Fabricators on Live Oak is going to be closing, that facility. They have been purchased by another company out of Washington and they have a couple of warehouses already in Stockton. So they're relocating that division over to their Stockton facilities. So the Live Oak location is for lease. I've been in contact with the broker and, you know, made sure to, to put a push out for sales tax and job creation. So those are the two things we really wanted to highlight with the broker. Worked in this community for a long time. So it's a great, you know, opportunity site for us. It's about 50,000 square feet, has a large office and a large yard, which is really hard to come by. So I'll keep you posted as we move through the leasing process with that location as well. That's all I have for this evening.
And I'd like to acknowledge Stephanie Van Stein, our HR director. Today was her last day. And earlier you approved Don Cortese to start tomorrow morning at 7:30. I already notified her and we welcome her. And that concludes staff comments.
Thank you. Next in the item, comment by city council member, future agenda item. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, just a couple of things real briefly. I wanted to bring up that in, on April 27th, our local Galt Sunrise Rotary is going to be having a fundraiser event at the Littleton Center. It's called Taco de Mayo. The tickets are fairly inexpensive. It's going to be a family event and so there'll be more to come on that. Look for posters and you can see me if you want to purchase tickets. I think they're going to be $20 for a taco dinner and cooked by our very own Pedro over from Ramos Jewelers. So I'm sure it'll be wonderful. Question I had, or at least I guess a future agenda item that I would like to explore is, I don't know if everyone's aware, but the Galt Elk Grove CERT program, which is a volunteer program of community members that help with police and both Elk Grove and Galt and the fire service here in town, as well as Elk Grove, with events such as many of our holiday events and things like that, as well as I think the Old Town Festival and other things. They also go out and look for missing people, assist with huge crime scenes and things like that. That organ, that program has now been moved to the old fire station 44 off of Third, actually Second and Guild. And they're trying to do some revamping of it. They've done a great job of the inside. I had an opportunity to tour that. And I think that they would like to do some, some other upgrades with the outside, like maybe paint and things to the building. This is an organization that's helped our community significantly over time and, and I know that other jurisdictions budget money every year for that, that particular use. And so what I would like is maybe at a future council meeting to talk, have CERT come. I know they came right before COVID and did a presentation about what they do. And then I would ask our, my colleagues to consider a donation to that project or the upgrade to that building in our city of $5,000. And so anyhow, if we could at least bring that back and have the discussion about what they do and, and potentially providing a donation, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
I would support that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We always support. All right, Councilmember Papino.
Just once again, thanks to the Park and Rec Commission for their work, staff for the long outreach processes on these so that we all had all the information ahead of time. And thank you for the questions, comments brought up by the public, Harry, Chris. Those are always much appreciated. And welcome aboard, Chris. Get ready. That's all I have.
Councilmember Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just thank you to staff for the information. And thank you to, as I echo Mr. Papino's sentiments to the Parks and Rec Commission. Thank you for, for what they do and all the commissions. I really, hopefully, will see the Parks and Rec Commission play a much larger role moving forward with, with all this Parks and Rec stuff, which is what the intention of that should be. And lastly, just welcome Chris, welcome Don. I don't know if she's here, I think she left. She was not here? Okay. So welcome aboard. Look forward to you guys hitting the ground running. I'll be blowing your email up, Chris, starting Monday. Just joking. All right, everybody have a good night, thanks.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to all the people that served our community. Congratulations to all those that are given the opportunity. In the past, Mr. Papino has highlighted education in the area of fentanyl. This past week, that has tragically touched my life. A child that I adopted's mother passed away due to fentanyl. So if you know an SRO officer needs a volunteer to highlight the realities of life, I would be glad to do that. Ray is a wonderful child. It's just going to be hard to explain to him what happened to his mother and I'll never really get to know him. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Myself, thank you for the staff, for their hard working. Thank you for the very clean report. Thank you for the public comment. All the public comment very important to us, especially with me is important. We have to always consider the top priority. Thank you for the citizen came to this meeting, spend their own time. Thank you for the media, they are still here in this. And welcome and congratulations to interim city manager, Chris Arias. And also welcome and congratulations to human resource director, Don Cortese. Thank you, everybody. If no more any comment, then I would like to adjourn that meeting at 46. Thank you, everyone.